Call the roll. Bernsen, Chick, here. Galanter, Goldberg, Hernandez, Holden, Miskowski, Pacheco, Padilla, Riley, Thomas, French, Wax, Walters, Ferraro. Ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
The council will please come to order. This is a meeting of the City Council for the City of Los Angeles on the 25th day of January 19, or rather, 2000. There are 15 council districts in the city. The regular meeting days are Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. We are currently being viewed by cable subscribers throughout the Los Angeles area on Channel 35, and we're also being monitored by council phone. The first order of business.
Approval over the minutes.
All right, Mr. Bernson moves. Mr. Holden seconds. There's no objections. Unanimous vote. Next item.
Commandatory resolutions for approval.
Unanimous vote. Well, go ahead and call them.
If it wasn't for me, they wouldn't have their buildings.
Okay, call them. Unanimous vote on that. The next item.
On the regular agenda, items number 15, 17, and 18, I request that those matters be continued until February 8.
15, 17, and 18, is there any objections to that? Seeing none, that will be the order. Next item.
Mr. President, items number one through 10 are on the regular agenda, or items for which public hearings have been held.
Any specials by council members?
Yes, four, three, and four.
Huh? Any specials?
Are we continuing items seven and eight, Mr. President?
Three and four special?
No, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Okay, any other specials? One through 10, with the exception of three and four. And we'll call five a special as an ordinance. So prepare the roll on one, two, six through 10. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Items number 11 through 38 on the regular agenda, with the exceptions of 15, 17, and 18, which have been continued.
11 through 38, we have cards on 11, 22. Call those special. And 32, we have cards. Anybody want to be heard on any of the other items? 11, 22, and 32, we will call special. And we'll call 36 special, too. Ms. Goldberg wants us to hold that.
Mr. President, forthwith on seven, please. Thank you.
The public hearings closed on all those that accepted, the ones I called.
38 should be special also.
Any specials?
38.
38 is called special by Mr. Hernandez. Any others?
21, please.
21 is called special by Mr. Padilla. Any others? Huh? If not, prepare the roll on 11, I mean, 12, 13. We'll call, 14 is an ordinance, we'll call that special. 12, 13, 16, 19, 20, 23 through 31, 33, 34, and 35, and 37. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Items number 41 on the continuation agenda is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Well, it's an ordinance, so we'll hold that until we get another member. Next item.
Items number 42 through 44 on the continuation agenda are items for which public hearings have not been held.
Okay, we have a card on 42 and 44, we'll call those special. We have 43 before us. Anybody want to be heard on that one? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Any discussion on item number, any, 43, any discussion? If not, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item. And we'll hold the closed session items, we'll leave on the desk. Next item.
Items three, four, and five are ordinances, so item number 11 has been called special.
Well, Mrs. Chick called three, and four called, so Mrs. Chick, you want to?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. On item three, if our city attorney, Mr. Echeverria, would come to the table if there are questions, this is an enabling ordinance for the charter to implement the language about council committees, and it makes no changes in what we have today, other than a few technical changes. And there is a substitute, I am moving the substitute ordinance, because there had to be revisions after the committee hearing on the technical changes. So, I don't know if you need to speak. If everyone has seen the committee report and accepts what I'm telling them, we'll have the 15 committees as they are.
Just to say that there are some actual technical changes, the correction of a few references to departments, to the pension departments, the deletion of the official salaries authority, which was repealed years ago, but was still referred to in the sections, and a couple of similar things.
Okay. So I ask for support on the substitute ordinance submitted by our city attorney.
The, this item, under the new charter, we can set our own committees, right?
Correct.
And this is to legal.
This enables that, and makes no changes in the current committees at this time.
But changes can be made subsequently.
Okay, Mr. Hernandez?
I just want to make sure I understand. We get to set up the committees again. Now, who selects a committee chair? My understanding right now is there's a system with 15 standing committees, and one council member chairs each committee, and the council president gets to do that.
Correct.
Under what we're adopting today, is that changing at all?
No, that is not changing. Under the new charter, it can change, but all this ordinance does is make the technical changes that are required, and keeping everything else in place.
So then, in a new discussion, that kind of dialogue would happen.
My understanding, we will not, there's not necessary to have 15 committees, there could be 25, or there can be six, and there doesn't have to be just three members, it could be more than three members.
Well, there was a while there, Mr. President, you were headed to only having one. We were called ad hoc.
Well, we usually have that anyway, even though it goes through committee. Mr. Bernson?
Well, you may have answered some of the questions. I'd like to know specifically what those technical changes are.
The technical changes are, from the ordinance that was transmitted to committee, to this ordinance, are that it switches the acquisition and sale of city property from the Public Works Committee to the Information Technology and General Services Committee, because the Asset Management Division of General Services is the one that handles that function, and that reports to the ITGS.
That's subject to approval by the council as well, right?
Correct.
Okay.
This is just the assignment of areas of responsibility for committees. The Department of Neighborhoods has been, the Oversight Committee for that has been Governmental Efficiency Committee. There was no designation of that in the ordinance, that designation is added.
It designates it to the Governmental Efficiency?
To the Governmental Efficiency Committee. The CERS was referred to City Employees Retirement System. The correct name is Los Angeles City Employees Retirement Systems, and that change was made. The name of the Department of Fire and Police pensions was corrected as well. There's a reference to city's policies on apartheid, which no longer exists, that was deleted. And there was a deletion of the reference to the official salaries authority, which was repealed a number of years ago, and an ordinance changed, that was deleted.
So in other words, and we can make these future amendments by ordinance anytime we wish, right?
Correct.
Anytime it's appropriate.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Galanter?
Yeah, I think the council members all understand this, but just in case there's anybody else interested, and I hope there is, I think we should be clear that what we're doing here is the charter, the new charter says that council committees, the old charter says council committees have to be set in the charter. So every time we created a new committee, like whenever it was we created a committee that looked at environment issues, we had to actually amend the charter. And under the new charter, instead of amending the charter each time, we create the committees by ordinance. So we have to amend or adopt a new ordinance if we want to change what the committees are. You're shaking your head, no. Is that not correct?
The names of the committees were not specified, even in the current charter.
No, no, but I'm not talking about that. You're just trying to make this more complicated. I'm trying to make it simpler. We used to, under the old charter, if we wanted to name the committees, or if we wanted to change the number of committees, we had to amend the city charter. Under the new charter, we don't amend the city charter, the charter says we can do that by ordinance, and what we're looking at today is the first ordinance relating to council committees that comes up under the new charter.
That's.
And if next year, or 10 years from now, we want to have a different number of committees, or have different names, we don't have to amend the charter, we just change the ordinance.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else? If not, we have three before us. Prepare. Okay, pre- as amended, prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. We'll send that forthwith. Item number four, Mrs. Chick, you call that special?
Colleagues, what you have before you is an ordinance and a settlement to an unfortunate longstanding disagreement between LAUSD and the City of Los Angeles over the Warner Center specific plan. I am very pleased to tell you that a consensus has been reached, agreements have been made, and if city staff would come to the table again on this issue, if there are questions, and also to...
Any specials?
Are we continuing items seven and eight, Mr. President?
Three and four special?
No, I don't, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay, any other specials? One through 10 with the exception of three and four. And we'll call five a special as an ordinance. So prepare the roll on one, two, six through 10, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Next item. Next item.
Items number 11 through 38 on the regular agenda with the exceptions of 15, 17, and 18, which have been continued.
11 through 38, we have cards on 11, 22. Call those special. 32, we have cards. Anybody want to be heard on any of the other items? 11, 22, and 32, we will call special. And we'll call 36 special, too. Ms. Goldberg wants us to hold that.
Mr. President. Fourth with on seven, please. Thank you.
The public hearing is closed on all those that accepted, the ones I called.
38 should be special also. 38.
38 is called special by Mr. Hernandez. Any others?
21, please.
21 is called special by Mr. Padilla. Any others? Huh? If not, prepare the roll on 11, I mean 12, 13. We'll call, 14 is an ordinance, we'll call that special. 12, 13, 16, 19, 20. 23 through 31. 33, 34, and 35. And 37. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Fourth with on 37. And fourth with on item number seven. Next item.
Item number 41 on the continuation agenda is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Well, it's an ordinance, so we'll hold that until we get another member. Next item.
Items number 42 through 44 on the continuation agenda are items for which public hearings have not been held.
Okay, we have a card on 42 and 44, we'll call those special. We have 43 before us, anybody want to be heard on that one? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Any discussion on item number, any 43, any discussion? If not, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item. And we hold the closed session items, we'll leave on the desk. Next item.
Items three, four, and five are ordinances, so item number 11 has been called special.
Well, Mrs. Chick called three and four called, so Mrs. Chick, you want to?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. On item three, if our city attorney, Mr. Echeverria would come to the table if there are questions. This is an enabling ordinance for the charter to implement the language about council committees. And it makes no changes in what we have today, other than a few technical changes. And there is a substitute, I am moving the substitute ordinance because there had to be revisions after the committee hearing on the technical changes, so I don't know if you need to speak. If everyone has seen the committee report and accepts what I'm telling them, we'll have the 15 committees as they are.
Just to say that there are some actual technical changes, the correction of a few references to departments, to the pension departments, the deletion of the official salaries authority, which was repealed years ago, but was still referred to in the sections, and a couple of similar things.
So I ask for support on the substitute ordinance submitted by our city attorney.
The, this item, under the new charter, we can set our own committees, right?
Correct.
And this is to legal.
This enables that and makes no changes in the current committees at this time.
At the current committees.
But changes can be made subsequently.
Okay, Mr. Hernandez?
I just want to make sure I understand. We get to set up the committees again. Now, who selects a committee chair? My understanding right now is there's a system with 15 standing committees. And one council member chairs each committee, and the council president gets to do that.
Right.
Under what we're adopting today, is that changing at all?
No, that is not changing. Under the new charter, it can change, but all this ordinance does is make the technical changes that are required and keeping everything else in place.
So then in a new discussion, that kind of dialogue would happen?
My understanding, we will not, there's not necessary to have 15 committees, there could be 25, or there can be six, and there doesn't have to be just three members, it could be more than three members.
Well, there was a while there, Mr. President, you were headed to only having one. We were called ad hoc.
Yeah, well, we usually have that anyway, even though it goes through committee. Mr. Bernsen?
Well, you may have answered some of the questions. I'd like to know specifically what those technical changes are.
The technical changes are, from the ordinance that was transmitted to committee, to this ordinance, are that it switches the acquisition and sale of city property from the Public Works Committee to the Information Technology and General Services Committee, because the Asset Management Division of General Services is the one that handles that function, and that reports to the ITGS.
That's subject to approval by the council as well, right?
Correct.
Okay.
This is just the assignment of areas of responsibility for committees. The Department of Neighborhoods has been, the oversight committee for that has been Governmental Efficiency Committee. There was no designation of that in the ordinance, that designation is added.
It designates it to the government efficiency?
To the Governmental Efficiency Committee. The CERS was referred to City Employees Retirement System. The correct name is Los Angeles City Employees Retirement Systems, and that change was made. The name of the Department of Fire and Police pensions was corrected as well. There's a reference to city's policies on apartheid, which no longer exists, that was deleted. And there was a deletion of the reference to the official salaries authority, which was repealed a number of years ago, and an ordinance changed, that was deleted.
So in other words, and we can make these future amendments by ordinance anytime we wish, right?
Correct.
Anytime it's appropriate.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Galanter?
Yeah, I think the council members all understand this, but just in case there's anybody else interested, and I hope there is, I think we should be clear that what we're doing here is the charter, the new charter says that council committees, the old charter says council committees have to be set in the charter. So every time we created a new committee, like whenever it was we created a committee that looked at environment issues, we had to actually amend the charter. And under the new charter, instead of amending the charter each time, we create the committees by ordinance. So we have to amend or adopt a new ordinance if we want to change what the committees are. You're shaking your head, no. Is that not correct?
The names of the committees were not specified even in the current charter.
No, no, but I'm not talking about that. You're just trying to make this more complicated. I'm trying to make it simpler. We used to, under the old charter, if we wanted to name the committees, or if we wanted to change the number of committees, we had to amend the city charter. Under the new charter, we don't amend the city charter. The charter says we can do that by ordinance, and what we're looking at today is the first ordinance relating to council committees that comes up under the new charter. And if next year or 10 years from now, we want to have a different number of committees or have different names, we don't have to amend the charter, we just change the ordinance.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else? If not, we have three before us. Okay, pre- as amended, prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. We'll send that forthwith. Item number four, Mrs. Chick, you call that special?
Colleagues, what you have before you is an ordinance and a settlement to an unfortunate longstanding disagreement between LAUSD and the City of Los Angeles over the Warner Center specific plan. I am very pleased to tell you that a consensus has been reached. Agreements have been made, and if city staff would come to the table again on this issue, if there are questions, and also to looks like our city attorney is carrying the four years' worth of paperwork on this as well. If you could also direct us in terms of what we are voting on, if there are any changes in what is before us, since this has been continued for several weeks.
Mrs. Chick, this is not a hearing item, but there is a Bradley Hogan who wants to be heard on this, but he's in favor of the proposal.
Yeah, I think Mr. Hogan is here basically to answer questions, if there are any, and not to make comment other than to respond. So he's prepared to do that if council members have questions.
Okay.
To be very brief, this is a settlement that was reached between the school district and the city. As Councilwoman Chick indicated, the school district will dismiss its lawsuit. And before you is the ordinance, ordinances to be adopted that constitute really the basis for the settlement. The school district has authorized settlement and these terms, and we recommend that you settle and adopt these ordinances.
I so move.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, prepare the roll on item number four. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number five on the regular agenda is an ordinance.
Yeah, we were holding that for 12 members, and we do have now. Any discussion on five? If not, prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number 11 on the regular agenda is, there is a person from the public who wishes to speak on this.
Yes, we have, we have some people from the Hyperion Treatment Plant, Manuel Nova. Would you take the center microphone over there? All those that want to be heard on this. Go ahead, please.
Good morning. I'm here to represent the EROs in regards to the amendment, the amendment to the Energy Recovery Energy Recovery Operators Layoff Avoidance Plan. I sent all council members a email message yesterday, so hopefully everyone had a chance to read it and see what our arguments are. Our basic arguments are-
Talk into the microphone, will you please?
Okay. Okay, I'm here today to ask you not to pass the item, because the Energy Recovery Operators were never involved in any labor management discussions at Hyperion with regards to this amendment. This amendment is not a layoff due to lack of worker funds. It is merely a reallocation of position to consolidate the Energy Recovery Operator classification with that of the wastewater operator classification. This First Amendment to the Energy Recovery Operation Layoff Avoidance Plan is unjust, because it unfairly eradicates the layoff and bid seniority of the 14 Energy Recovery Operators who have contributed greatly, more than 15 years of dedicated service. I agree with the concept of consolidating the Energy Recovery Class and the Wastewater Operator Classification. It is the method that is unjust. Okay. Our arguments are that we were never allowed to voice our concerns. In 1997, the council mandated that the Hyperion Treatment Plant have labor management meetings to discuss any layoffs, reallocation of positions, and they began to do that. But now, we're no longer involved in the process. Our union representative is the only one that represents us in this process. And I have given out some handouts, and if you noticed that on page 13, I included a I included a recent action that we've been taking for the last two years against our employee organization, and that was before the ERB. We just concluded that.
Okay, you want to take all the time, or you want to have some of your other colleagues?
Okay, I'd just like to say something, a few more things, I'll let them talk. Okay? All we're asking for is that if we, that we be allowed to 108 transfer into the wastewater classification so that we can take our layoff and bid seniority. If that's not possible, that there be some mandate that allows us to at least retain our bid seniority, which allows us to select the shifts and the hours that we work. That's basically our main argument. I'll let my other colleague speak now.
Okay, Mohammed El Al. Give your name, please.
Hi, my name is Jordan Siplon. I'm on the ERO floor at the Hyperion Treatment Plant. I'm here to discuss about the First Amendment to the Hyperion Layoff Avoidance Plan. The statement I'm going to make here may not mean a lot to most of you, but I take this little opportunity I have that may. Hopefully, I'll be able to persuade you to change your decision on this issue. Currently, there are 14 Energy Recovery Operators at Hyperion Treatment Plant. We have an average of 18 years of city service. And the decision that you're going to do today will have an impact on that for these 14 employees. The word "layoff" alone should trigger a red flag in here. I want to know if the council members gave an authorization to sanitation management to lay off 14 city employees. I bet you you didn't. In order to have a layoff, two issues have to be satisfied, and that's lack of funds and lack of work. And so far, management haven't proven that yet. To make this issue more believable, they're declaring the Energy Recovery Facility as a shutdown facility. That facility that we're talking about here has already been shut down three years ago. So what we're doing right now doesn't mean really anything on the equipment that they're talking about. The equipment we're operating are critical to the day-to-day operation of Hyperion Treatment Plant. And what's so ironic about that is that they're paying, with this First Amendment, they're paying premium rate to operate the equipments that we were operating right now with other classification in the Hyperion. The whole goal in this, in the layoff avoidance is to consolidate the two classes of operators at Hyperion into one. We don't have any problem in doing that, as long as management, city management, sanitation management is doing the proper process of consolidating, which is through 108 transfer. I think we should resolve this issue and do the proper procedure in doing that. The option-
Thank you. Go ahead. You finished? Are you finished?
Just one more thing I want to say is that though we are represented by a labor union, Local 501, we really have a fair representation, because this issue was brought to us after the fact that this issue was already done, or they already talked about and negotiated for us. So there was really a labor management agreement on this issue. That's all.
Thank you. Mohammed El Al?
My name is Mohammed Abdalal, and I'm the supervisor of the Energy Recovery Operator System. And today, I want to discuss a couple of issues. Number one, that management violate Article Number 13 for the MOU, which suppose anytime management have a problem with a group of people, supposed to meet and confer with them. Management never meet with us before taking this decision. They surprise us by this decision violating Article Number 13. The second thing also, the councilman recommended to our management about two years ago to follow the labor management concept to meet and confer with subordinate. Management also violating this concept, and they never meet with us. One of the things that I'd like to mention today is that they want to demote us into the transitional worker, which each of us will be demoted about four or five steps down. While management was have other solution to put us as a building engineer or to give us other option that exist in the city. They want to go to the wastewater operator, to go to the transitional worker level, which less than interior level. Myself, I've been working 15 years in the city. I started up three buildings from scratch. I earned more than 15 no commendation and three product award. I feel that my capacity and my knowledge is supposed to be utilized in a bigger level, not to go down into the transitional worker level.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mohammed.
Hunter Shapiro?
Mr. President and council members, item number 11 concerns the Hyperion Layoff Avoidance Plan. And two, by the members of the union that you just heard talking, Local 101, and the city management. This entire Hyperion project, you understand, is a $3.5 billion authorized project. $3.5 billion, of which approximately $2 billion has been spent. And very few reports have come down to allow the city, or the unions, or the people to understand what's happening. I don't understand what's happening. In fact, when this item 11 was brought up, all that's available is this one paragraph that you got on your agenda. There was no backup material, there was nobody who thought any backup material was necessary for either you or for the general public. I think this is very important, that we should all understand what's happening. Because when we're talking about a $3.5 billion project, of which has a billion and a half left to be spent, what is going on? What is happening? Do they intend to spend it? Why can't we have an overall plan to let us know how the taxpayers' money has been, is being used, and has been used? Mr. President?
Thank you. Okay, the public hearing is closed. We have item number 11. Is there any discussion on this? Item number 11. If not, prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number 14 is an ordinance.
Okay, we fourth with on 11. We had 14 was an ordinance, and we didn't have the 12 members present. Any discussion? If not, prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item 21 is called special by Councilmember Padilla.
Mr. Padilla?
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, requested the item be called special. Request that you send this item back to committee with an amendment. Like to request a joint CLA and city clerk report on this motion.
You want to report now, or in committee?
In committee.
Okay, you're asking it to go back to committee. Is there any objection to that? Mr. Hernandez?
Mr. President, if it's going to go back to committee, could they consider establishing residency all the way back to junior high school and taking into account of your bust into a new district?
Why don't we put it at age requirement?
We'll take every consideration, Mr. Hernandez.
You have to be over 70 to be eligible to run. Mrs. Walters?
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the council. As most of you know, I, when I ran for this office initially, upon the death of Mr. Lindsay, which was unanticipated, he died after the 30-day limit. If I were to, that a person running for the office would have had to have moved into the district in order to run. And I went to federal court, and for my case, it was successful. I'm here and challenge that residence requirement. I think that you will find that residency requirements have not been upheld where they've been present. And, you know, I think that beyond being a citizen in the United States and a registered voter in the City of Los Angeles, I don't think that we should really have residence requirements. But that's everybody to their own concerns on that. But I'd like Mr. Alpern to talk to the council about it and see if it should go to committee as a result of what he tells us, or if we should note and file it. And he doesn't have to make that decision, we'll make that decision, but tell us about it.
Yeah, of course, whether it goes to committee or not is whether or not the council wants to send it back to committee. The California Supreme Court has made clear, in case going back to 1973, that durational residency requirements for candidacy of greater than 30 days before filing your nominating papers would be unconstitutional. In your case, Ms. Walters, we had a question of whether or not, as applied in the particular circumstances there, where the council made the decision on when the matter would, when the election would be on the ballot and when the filing period would open. I think it was 31 or 32 days before the filing period would open. And the court said that under those circumstances, that as applied to your case, we couldn't enforce the 30-day rule. 30-day rule is still constitutional across the board. There may, of course, be cases where we could not legally apply it. There's been a suggestion that excuse me?
I didn't mean to suggest that it wasn't constitutional across the board now. And if I didn't, I intended to indicate that the decision pertained to my case only.
I just, yeah, I just, I just wanted to be sure for my end that I got it across correctly. There's been a suggestion that we change the filing date. And we probably can change the filing date. How far back we change the filing date is another question. There may very well be a point where if the filing date is too early, that the courts will, and very far from the election date, the courts will view that as a residential, durational residency requirement in excess of what's permissible. I mean, we have 30, we right now have the court saying 30 days before you file your papers. That's based upon a campaign period of a few months. How the courts would react to something, to pushing it back more than a short amount is something that I think we would have to do some research on and some thinking about for a further report to the council.
Mr. Holden?
Honest President members, clearly there's a question that we can't answer regarding what's being requested. 30 days is what it is. You're not going to change that. It's with the electorate. If they elect you, then you're in. They don't, then you're out. If a person moves into the district, it becomes a campaign issue. But in the end, the voters will decide. You can't worry about who's going to run against you that don't live in your district. You do a good job, they'll put you back in office. You got some concerns about the job you're doing, then tighten up on it. This is the, this is, this report, this approach here, even though my friends are doing it, and you are my friends, absurd. We can't do that. I know some assemblymen who claimed to live in the district and didn't live in the district, and it was well established. And the court ruled that they voted for them, and it was with the legislative body is whether or not they would seat them. In the assembly, that's in fact what they did. They voted to seat the person who was elected, even though the questions had been raised about residency. And this has been going on and on and on and on. I think we do not open up the process, but we close the process when we say you can run and you can't run, or you have represented this district in some other fashion, but you don't actually live there. And reapportionment, you can't draw the lines to exclude incumbent elected officials, even though you have to try to gerrymage it sometime to get them into the new boundaries, and at the same time be in compliance with the population based on the new census count. Now, that's, you cannot do. But I must tell you that this limit that you put on, this duration of time, is, as the city attorney has already said, is questionable on its face and unconstitutional for sure. So I'd like to vote for it. No, I don't like to vote for it, and I'm- And I'm not going to vote for it. So I would say that this is something that we cannot support.
Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President and colleagues, you know, it's interesting that today everyone is celebrating the Supreme Court's ruling that contribution limits are a step forward in democracy, because the Supreme Court recognizes that if the voters don't have confidence in the system, then it undermines democracy and what we hold to be so important, but basically a open process that's fair and clean. What we're not talking about is the fact that too many times, especially in my race, there were special interests behind a candidate who did not live in the district, who spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to promote that candidate for election. I would agree with Mr. Holden that it was a campaign issue, but for the fact that there are very few individuals within these districts who can actually compete and match that type of firepower. It makes it very difficult. In my election, there were ten candidates who were what I call organic from the district, and there were three candidates who decided to take this opportunity of an open seat and move in. So what we have is a problem that I'm not sure if the solution is within the residency requirement, or if there are more aggressive mechanisms that need to be employed in terms of actually showing that someone lives in the district, because that can be a question. It's one thing to say you live in the district, and it's another thing to actually live in the district. It's not enough to have a duffel bag of clothes at another residence and claim that as your residency. So I support sending it back to committee to reexamine some of the issues. At the same time, let's think about one race that's going on right now. It's a year, it's about fifteen months away, and it's the mayor's election, and everyone's talking about the fact that this is part of the campaign period. Mr. Alperin has identified accurately that the window between the filing period and the election date is considered the election period, and that opening, opening up that period may be construed as lengthening the residency requirement. I understand the debate, but I think there's sufficient evidence to show that in today's times, for these very important positions that are held here, especially in our city, that the election period could be a lengthy period. If you look at all the jockeying that's occurring, eighteen months, sixteen months, and especially right now, fifteen months away from the mayor's election. So an election period can be opened for legitimate and reasonable interpretation of longer than the four months that it currently has between the filing period of December and the election period of April, the four, four and a half months, since everyone's already decided, there are many people today who've already decided that the election's over, and we haven't even started the filing period. So, well, if you ask conventional wisdom, you'll see. But, but my point is the same, that the window of election period is open for a reasonable debate, and it could be expanded.
All right. Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, this is not a matter of job security. It's not a matter of any of us being afraid of people running against us. It's not a matter of whether or not we think we're doing a good job or not. This motion was introduced by me and Councilmember Pacheco in the spirit of democracy and representation. Councilmember Pacheco did a good job of explaining the unfortunate situation some districts are in. If you're a local candidate with a long time in a district, with years and years of hard work in a district, but simply cannot match political connections, a big checking account, or other factors that put some candidates at an unfair advantage in running for office, we have a responsibility to try to level the playing field. I believe that the best leadership and the best representation comes from within communities, and that's what we're trying to achieve. An expanded residency requirement will help ensure that people who are elected to office, people who are even qualified to run for office, have a commitment and have a history and a track record in that district. And the voters need to be able to count on that. With a short residency requirement, big bucks, political contacts can more than make up the difference, and that's unfair. Now, Mr. Alperin, I appreciate the work you've put into your initial report already. I do appreciate it and I respect it, but my goal remains, how can we ensure that people have local leadership and local talent to select from on election day? And that's why I've asked for the CLA's office and the city clerk to also give their opinions. I respect the work you did in research throughout the state of California, but there's forty-nine other states in this country of ours, and I want to also know what's going on in other jurisdictions. And so that's why I've asked for this item to go back to committee, so we can do further research, further homework. And if the Constitution of the United States says we can't go more than thirty days, well then we'll have to put our heads together to find another way of accomplishing what we're trying to accomplish. But remember, colleagues, this is ultimately an issue of democracy and representation.
Thank you. Mr. Hernandez.
Mr. President, members of the council, you know, I live five doors down from where I went to elementary school, and I traveled to Grand Tolo about six miles to go to college. In my entire life, I've lived where I lived. What I found changed on me were council districts, especially during the reapportionment era. There was a time I was part of Joe Wax's district, and there was a time I was part of Art Snyder's district, and I was part of Gloria Molina's district, and I was part of Mike Wu's district, and before Mike Wu, Peggy Stevenson. And twelve years passed, and those were my representatives, and the boundaries changed. But I stayed there. And I think the fact that I stayed there gave me an advantage, and that's why I got to represent that community. I think that's why Mr. Pacheco won. I think that's why Mr. Padilla won. It makes a difference, especially in a close race. Part of what's bothersome to me about this whole debate, because we have a constitution before us that puts certain kinds of requirements, right now I'm voting for someone for Congress who's running for mayor, and that's confusing to me, because he either wants to be my congressman or he wants to be my mayor, but right now I'm voting for someone for Congress who's running for mayor. And the question of residency is real. I also think that in my district, I'm bothered because I have people who live there, who've been there for twelve, fourteen years, who don't have the right to vote. They have the right to buy a house, and they have a right to pay taxes, but they don't have the right to vote because of the citizenship requirement that the city has. And when you look at our school board, there's no question in my mind that probably a majority of the parents whose children are attending schools don't have the right to participate in elections, as to who will be their representatives. And so what we're talking about right now is a basic constitution and basic rights that are not given to everybody, and so the rules are established. But I know that those of us who claim long-term residency in Los Angeles is not necessarily the rule. A lot of people move into LA and establish themselves here and then become public officials. So again, I support the motion for it to go back to committee so that it could be looked at more, but at the same time, I'm hesitant to say that changing the rules is going to change the realities.
Mrs. Chick.
I think it's time to move the previous question, please.
Okay, there are no one else wants to be heard, so previous question has been imposed. Now we have a motion to refer this back to committee. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Mr. Foro, may I ask for a reconsideration of item four, the request of the city attorney?
Yes. Is there any objections to reconsidering item four? Seeing none, the matters before us.
Yes, I move to authorize the city attorney to sign the settlement agreement on behalf of the city, and I'd like to move the whole item forthwith, please.
Okay, you heard the amendment, so prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved, and we'll send it forthwith. We're going to take item number forty-four next. We do have some people who want to be heard on this. Do you want to be heard first, Mr.?
If I may, Mr. Foro, I'd like to suggest that we hear first from the city attorney, and since the motion refers to an item that will be considered by the Regional Water Quality Board tomorrow, I believe Mr. Dickerson from the regional board is here, and maybe he could come to the table as well. And we're just to ask the CLA and Mr. Dickerson to explain what's before us, and then I want to alert you that I do have a substitute motion which has been circulated, and it's an effort to resolve some of the differences that came up the last time we discussed this. So if we could find the CLA, we could proceed with this. Step this way.
Ron.
We're asking you guys to do a brief presentation about what this is, and Mr. Dickerson as well, and then I, if you will save the rest of my time, I'd like to say something afterwards.
Barb Garrett with the Chief Legislative Analyst Office. What's before us today is, in the stormwater permit that the city supported, there is a requirement that model programs be adopted and approved by the executive director of the Regional Water Quality Control Board. This eighty-five co-city submitted a plan, a model program for approval, and the Regional Water Quality Control Board has modified that plan. They have included an eighty-five percentile retention factor. The city expressed concern early on in the process that we didn't have adequate information to determine if that requirement was an appropriate requirement or not. We didn't feel like we had the information to decide whether it was cost-effective, whether it reduced pollutants, or whether it created other environmental problems through cross-media impacts. So the recommendation before you today is that we need to obtain that information. We don't know that it's appropriate to accept a regulatory mandate prior to having that information. So what we have recommended is that we move forward with a pilot program for large development projects and industrial projects, and all city of Los Angeles development projects, to get better information and have stormwater tests the benefits, and then revisit that requirement as part of the upcoming permit negotiations in eighteen months.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having me here today. I just want to point out that today's rainfall event, it's just very propitious to be discussing it today. What we're dealing with is really a common sense issue, and that is that when you walked to the council today, to your car, you undoubtedly saw the slick, the oil slick that is always there when it rains, and that is pollution, that's stormwater pollution, and it's just very self-evident today. Not only are we talking about the kind of oil runoff, we're talking about heavy metals that are really truly in the tens of thousands of pounds every year of heavy metals that are being, traveling down the LA River and ending up in the LA Harbor. It's a huge problem, and as you can imagine, with ten million people in the LA Basin, a large number of them being from the city of LA, it's a significant problem. The issue before the regional board tomorrow is what's called a standard urban stormwater mitigation plan, and it's really an issue for the future. We're really talking about plans which are going to affect new developments and substantial redevelopment. And so the impact of these plans is really not going to be felt for a very long time into the future, and it's really a legacy that you need to pass on from today to the future generations, the children of the city of Los Angeles and its citizens in the future, because that's when you're really going to have an impact. That's when you're really not going to have to retrofit facilities or build new facilities to treat stormwater pollution, which by then, and actually now, is perhaps the most significant pollution, water pollution problem that we have in the city of Los Angeles. So with that, I'd be happy to respond to any questions that you have.
Okay, we have, we have some people who want to be heard, and I'll ask them not to repeat. Mark Gold, Steve somebody, if you're, I don't know if you're a doctor or not, but I can't read it. Alex Helperin and Bob Wilkins, would you please proceed? Mark Gold.
Actually, Alex Helperin from the Natural Resources Defense Council. I'd like to speak first, if I may.
Okay, go ahead.
As Mr. Dickerson said, this is a problem that has been going on for as long as there's been development in Los Angeles, and it will continue as long as development continues to spread further and further out. Every new development adds more hard surface, and more pollution runs into our receiving waters, and so it's essential that we take at least this very minimum step now to stop the continuing development from causing continually more and more pollution into our receiving waters. The CLA mentioned that there's inadequate support for this proposal, but actually, the support is overwhelming. There's support all over the country from other municipalities who are implementing even stronger programs than what the regional board is suggesting for Los Angeles now. There are cities such as Austin, Texas, Portland, Oregon, Denver, Colorado, the entire Puget Sound region in the Northeast, the entire state of Delaware, the entire state of Maryland. All of these areas impose stronger standards than the one that the regional board is proposing today. So in fact, there's a great deal of support, and the CLA may not have the whole record from the board, but they can certainly request it. It's not, it's not necessary, the board has reviewed an extensive amount of information and has, and has come to the conclusion that this is the right standard. The standard is also supported by four of the leading stormwater experts in the country, from Tom Shuler in Washington DC to Bob Pitt in the South, again, Richard Horner in the Northeast, and Dr. Stenstrom here at UCLA. Four of the leading stormwater experts in the nation all agree that this is the minimally acceptable standard. So again, the support is overwhelming. And indeed, many of the municipalities in the LA County area support it. We already see West Hollywood and Santa Monica implementing standards such as this, the city of Calabasas, and many other cities who aren't yet implementing such a strong program have nevertheless expressed support for the board, such as El Monte, Rancho Palos Verdes, Pasadena. So what we're asking Los Angeles to do today is just to join those cities to support the regional board in imposing this as a, this point seven-five inch standard as a minimally acceptable standard. Thank you.
Okay. Who wants to speak next?
Good morning. My name's Mark Gold. I'm the executive director of the environmental group Heal the Bay at twenty-seven oh one Ocean Park in Santa Monica. On behalf of Heal the Bay, I'd like to express our strong support for Councilperson Galanter's alternative motion, which expresses that the eighty-fifth percentile, and I need to clarify this, because this is not what we heard from the CLA's office, for treatment, capture, or infiltration. It's not just capturing on site. I think that should really make you realize there's a great deal more flexibility to this standard than I think you've been led to believe. Inserting things like catch basin filters and the like is something that can easily be done by, by any new development. Also, from a cost-effective standpoint in dealing with stormwater pollution, obviously, dealing with it before development's actually completed, rather than a retrofit, is a much more cost-effective way to do that, and that's why you're seeing this going forward. I might want to remind the council, for those who remember, that Councilperson Galanter, actually in nineteen ninety-three, made a motion basically asking for an ordinance to be written on this exact topic, and it still hasn't been written. And so what you've seen is, first in ninety-three, the city tried to be a leader, and now, at this point, we're basically asking the city to do what needs to be done throughout the region and do their fair share in stopping stormwater pollution. On the CLA's report itself, I would like to say that there's been a reluctance to move forward, although we agree that with large commercials and city projects and new industrial projects, that they should meet the design standards, and we're glad to see that the CLA supported that. The proposal clearly does not go far enough. Many categories of new development are omitted that are included within the regional board's proposal, and also numerous exemptions and conditions are offered. And lastly, I would like to say, in wrapping this up, that we're talking about a design standard. How would an engineer be supposed to put in a structural best management practice unless there was a design standard in place? It's one of the reasons why the stormwater program has been so largely ineffective, and that's why this is needed so much. Thanks.
Who else want to know?
My name is Steve Fleischley. I'm sorry, I'm not a doctor, but I'll try to write clearly next time. I am the executive director of the Santa Monica Baykeeper. I too am in support of Ruth Galanter's motion to have standards in place for new development projects. The record on this is enormous. So much research has gone in this. Over the last several years, the Natural Resources Defense Council has put an unbelievable amount of time into finding all of the places across the country that are already doing this. This is not going to put Los Angeles out in front. It's going to allow Los Angeles to finally catch up with a lot of other places and start dealing with the stormwater problem. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, the public hearing is closed. Ms. Galanter.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to recite a little history here.
Wait a minute.
Sorry?
Mr. President, excuse me. I thought I had submitted a speaker card. My name is Ron.
Yeah, you did, but I called your, well, I called your name, but you, go ahead.
Thank you.
Be very brief.
I will try. Good morning, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is- My name is Ron Wilkins. I'm with Western States Petroleum Association. We're the trade association for the oil industry in the western United States, and many of our member companies own or will in the future construct service stations that will be subject to these requirements. I'd like to limit or focus my comments this morning on the particular source category of retail gasoline outlets. I'd first like to observe that the recommendations prepared by Mr. Deaton, in my view, accurately reflect the history of this issue, and there's little in this credible document that we would disagree with. Most of the recommendations do seem worthy of your, of your support. However, I will probably remain neutral since I don't see that service stations are affected by the specific recommendations. What we do care very much about are the sewer swamps being proposed by the regional board, and I think that Mr. Deaton's analysis accurately covers our concerns, concerns regarding the lack of actual data on water quality impairment. And to make this brief, I'll just skip to another issue that is of concern of ours, and that is the evaluation of cross-media impacts, particularly the risk of contamination of the subsurface environment. That is a particular concern at service stations where clearly, when you think about underground storage tank issues, we go out of our way to limit pathways for pollutants to enter the ground. And it has to be acknowledged that we may even need to do more, and we're in discussions with the State Water Quality Control Board on those issues. I am here this morning because I would like, in a positive manner, to speak briefly regarding what in our view are the appropriate requirements for stormwater control at service stations in particular. Years ago, WISPA recognized that we needed to be proactive with the issue of stormwater quality. We conducted several studies, water quality runoff, the effective, the effectiveness of various best management practices, et cetera. These studies informed our subsequent participation with the California Stormwater Quality Task Force in the development of an RGO Stormwater BMP Guide. This guide was developed over a period of a year, was published as a consensus document representing industry and the members of the, of the Stormwater Quality Task Force in March of 1997. At this point, I should tell you that I believe the regional water quality, the regional water board is proposing that RGOs should comply with the requirements of the task force guide and not the numerical standard, but to tell you the truth, I'm really not sure. The reason is because I see conflicting statements between the January 18 staff report and the proposed requirements. I'd like to make a recommendation and conclusion. First, let me briefly acknowledge that the report from the CLA's office recognizes two studies that were done. One is a study that WISPA did in conjunction with the American Petroleum Institute. That study concluded that a well-maintained service station is unlikely to have any adverse impact on stormwater quality. They lacked a copy of that report, and I have remedied that this morning. The second study is one that was actually conducted for the county of Orange, and when they looked at runoff quality from service stations, all of the pollutant analyses were below the detectable limits, generally in the range of a half a part per billion to 10 parts per billion, and that's billion with a B. So there are studies that indicate that stormwater runoff from service stations does not appear to be causing an adverse impact on stormwater quality, and I'm not aware of any data to suggest the contrary. Nevertheless, WISPA and our member companies continue to support the best management practices recommended in the task force BMP guide, and I would respectfully request that you consider incorporating this BMP guide into your position regarding the sewer swamps and the requirements that should be applicable within the City of Los Angeles. Thank you. I'd be happy to answer the questions.
Thank you very much. The public hearing is now closed. Ms. Galanter?
All right. I want to just remind you a little bit of the history, and then I think that we've resolved a number of our differences, but CLA and I are still struggling over one, which we're now going to involve all of you in as well. The, last fall, the proposal by the regional board was considered at one of their hearings, and we had, we, the council, had expressed some concern because the CLA took their concerns, which it is appropriate for them to have, directly to the board, and we pulled this back into council in order for the council to actually set what the city's policy would be, obviously with the advice and counsel of the CLA. The proposal is, as various people have intimated, fairly controversial, and while the speakers at the, during the public hearing cited a few cities who have supported it, in fact, a lot of cities have opposed it. And the council members here have made clear that we don't want to be in a position of opposing the regional board's efforts to clean up the environment. We are in fact committed to and have put a lot of money into trying to clean up water that, that gets into the ocean and into the groundwater, and we haven't gotten as far as we'd like, but it is an enormously expensive proposition. I also want to point out that one of the concerns we've talked about before, and in contrast to the other cities that have already signed on, is that we have a city with enormously varied environmental conditions within our borders. And so in some places, it, there is, it's easier to control runoff than in others, and different parts of the city, different techniques would be appropriate than would be the case in, in other places. So I've been working with the CLA's office for a long time, and I would like to express my appreciation to Ms. Garrett for her patience as we go around and around on these things. And the substitute motion that you see before you, 44A, we thought we had resolved just about everything, that they were concerned about or that I was concerned about. And let me call your attention to the one thing that's left that I'm aware of, unless you spring another one on me, where there is a difference of opinion between the CLA and myself. And that has to do with the second paragraph, the first "I further move." There's an "I therefore move," and then there's an "I further move," and then there's another "I further move." My, my intention here is to endorse the regional board's efforts in concept to raise and reserve the right to raise the concerns that have been raised already, and, and as we get deeper into this, we may discover others. And the difference of opinion is that CLA recommends, as you heard earlier, that, that we ask that a pilot program be established to test it out before they do a regulation. And what we've suggested in this motion is that they make an effort to answer our concerns in the regulation, but it doesn't specify, we, it doesn't say we oppose making a regulation until you've done all of that. And the reason for that is that we're going to disagree forever about whether they have fully satisfied our concerns. At some point, somebody's got to say, okay, let's, you know, we do have a stormwater problem here in Southern California, and it is not getting better, and the more pavement, the more development that is done throughout Southern California, the worse the runoff problem gets because we're not capturing it. I want to point out to you that Dr. Gold mentioned earlier that the 85 percent, and there is a correction Ms. Goldberg pointed out, it's not 85th on the bottom, third line from the bottom on the first page, instead of 85th percentile, it's supposed to say 85 percent. And in the first moving, yes, you're right, in the "I therefore move" paragraph. So it's really, I think it only fair to give Ron and Barb a chance to tell you why they think I'm wrong on this, and then we can, we see what everybody else has to say and go around on it. But Dr. Gold pointed out that the 85 percent refers to, I've forgotten now what all three of them were, but you could either retain the, the water on site, you could get it into treatment, and there was some third thing, and somehow all of that together has to total 85 percent. We're not sure, CLA's not sure that that's what it means, so one of the questions that will emerge as this is, as the board is deliberating is exactly what does it mean. The board is going to take its position, it's going to have its hearing tomorrow, which is the reason that I asked for this to be taken out of order so we could act today. And I think I'm going to stop there and ask the CLA, you might as well explain why you don't think we should do what I'm saying we should do.
Mr. Fuer?
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise in support of Ms. Galanter's motion, which actually I seconded, and I seconded it because while recognizing that the CLA has expressed important concerns, on balance, I think the city needs to be as aggressive as possible when it comes to cleaning up our water that flows into the bay. Our stormwater has been an enormous issue for a number of years. Colleagues, you know I focused on this since I became a council member, and I think that the motion, as it's framed by Ms. Galanter, gets us to where we need to go. Let me turn to Mr. Dickerson for a second, if I could. The fundamental issue, I think, pardon me, the, the CLA is concerned regarding the second paragraph, as, as you've heard. Have you read the motion?
Yes, I have.
All right. When presented with the second moving clause, which encourages your team to address the concerns and adopt flexible policies, is that, from your standpoint, a meaningless moving clause because it'll be ignored, or is it meaningful, and if so, to what extent?
Well, actually, I think it's very meaningful because the issue is going to come back before the board in the consideration of the next stormwater permit for the county and municipalities in Los Angeles County. So that's July of 2001. Between now and then, there's going to be, I think, a huge debate and discussion as to the significance of the board's action, assuming that they adopt the proposal tomorrow. There'll be additional information generated before the board, hopefully, so there's a lot of opportunity. I would also emphasize that the proposal before the board has a number of very specific provisions in it which are intended to provide additional flexibility to municipalities. For example, a waiver provision and as well a rooftop runoff provision.
Right. I, colleagues, I want to underscore, we in Los Angeles, with our enormous environmental problems, need, as at least one of the speakers mentioned, to be absolutely on the cutting edge, in the forefront nationwide, when it comes to the quality of our air and the quality of our water. And I think if we move forward with Ms. Galanter's substitute motion, we'll be propelling the city in that direction, and to do less, I'm concerned, will allow existing problems to continue to worsen as the debate continues. We can't afford that. Our kids can't afford that.
Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Mr. President, members of the council, Mr. Dickerson, I think it should be communicated to the board that the Los Angeles City Council takes this matter very, very seriously. The Chief Legislative Analyst has reviewed the prospective policy with CARE. One of the members of the Environmental Quality and Waste Management Committee has offered a substitute motion today that goes to other substantive issues. And I think, Mr. President, members of the council, it should be our resolve to say in no uncertain terms to the board that this matter is obviously important to us as it is important to the board. The request that I rise to make is that this body be allowed 30 days to reconcile the outstanding differences, and at a date certain, we will then be prepared to make our recommendation to the board. Mrs. Galanter has raised very substantive issues. Those who have been prepared to speak by way of public comment have also weighed in with very important issues, but this is too important of an issue for it to be disposed of by the body absent a more thoroughgoing discussion in the context of committee. Mr. President, I would then move that a formal be, a request be made of the Regional Quality Board to permit 30 days so that we can have the appropriate committee hearing, and by date certain, we will have our views on this communicated or transmitted to the board in the appropriate fashion, and I would so move.
Is there a second to that motion?
I believe the, the regional board is going to take a vote tomorrow, so that, if, if I may suggest, Mr. Ridley Thomas, the way to do it would be for the council to adopt the motion and for the committee to request a briefing or to hold a hearing, to which we'd invite not only the CLA, but Mr. Dickerson and others, prior to whatever's going to happen next July, this coming July. They're going to take a vote tomorrow, which is why this is before us today.
Well, the question that needs to be answered, which I don't know, is, when is the date for implementation of the prospective policy, Mr. Dickerson?
That hasn't been quite totally resolved yet, but the expectation is that municipalities would have 100 and, 180 days, six months, after the date of which the sewer swamps are approved by myself.
All right. I guess what I'm attempting to accomplish, Mr. President, members of the council, is not to have us make a commitment that we wish to revisit, and I would hope that there can be reconciliation between the disparate points of view, although I don't want to magnify the differences, but it would seem to me that a lot could be accomplished by us being unified in this regard. And I wonder if it is not reasonable to ask for that kind of consideration, Mr. Dickerson, so that this municipality could weigh in substantially rather than with a lack of consensus at this point. That question is to you, sir.
Can you answer that question?
I really can't speak for the board. The board will take its decision tomorrow and act.
Are you prepared to make a recommendation to the board in light of the request of the council, should it be forthcoming?
I will convey to the board the council's concern. We have a, we've been through this issue for a very long time, and the, and the board is primed to act and make some decision on this tomorrow. We had a hearing back in September of 1980, oh, excuse me, 1999, an all-day hearing practically to discuss the issue, so the board is actively anticipating a decision tomorrow.
All righty.
Mr. Wax?
Thank you.
I support Ms. Galanter's motion, and I want to ask her a question and some of the staff. This applies only to new developments, right?
I believe so, yes.
New development and substantial redevelopment.
New development and substantial redevelopment. I want to raise something that doesn't hold this back, but, but raises another issue. I'm particularly looking at the paragraph about the range of options that developers have for compliance, and your belief that they could be achieved with relatively simple and inexpensive design. What about existing developments? There are, if you take something as simple, for example, as leaving a grassy swell in other open spaces so runoff can seep into the ground, I would bet you that just even beginning to use some of the beautification monies we have around this city in TNIs and LANNIs and CRAs and all, with relatively simple, knowing what we've done with some, even some strip malls and all in my district, relatively simple and inexpensive, you could begin doing that in some of the existing developments as well.
We've actually done it in a couple of schoolyards.
And I'm beginning to wonder, if it's that inexpensive and that easy to comply, or at least some of it is, you don't have to maybe reach the same standard for a new develop, for a new one as an existing one, if we begin to consider possibly some imposition on existing developments throughout the city that would be relatively simple to comply with, especially in those areas where at least monies are available from a wide variety of, of sources for projects that could be eligible for that. You, you could make, if, you know, I mean, if you're only going to achieve this with new development, think of what, just a little bit, with all the existing developments would achieve. And I think that we should, as a separate item, obviously it can't be done here, begin to explore the possibility of some, some mandatory policy or some policy with regard to existing developments. And it doesn't needn't be onerous, and it needn't, needn't achieve the same, necessarily initially, the same degree, but there are probably some very simple things in, in many areas with the assistance of money that's already available for what I would call related purposes that could kill, you know, accomplish two things with, with, with one expenditure. And certainly, when you talk about beautification projects in areas that are developed, it's not very far to, to, to take the leap that some of a beautification project could, could accomplish some of the things that you're intending to accomplish here with new development. So perhaps, Ms. Galanter, if you would work, I would, I would like to co-produce, present that with you, on a motion that begins separately from this, and we can introduce another time, a motion that looks for taking some action with respect to existing developments as well as just new developments.
We also have an opportunity, I'd be delighted to do that. We also have an opportunity through such projects that the city's undertaking as the zoo refurbishment, and this is actually the same proposal I made the other day for the road in the parking lot.
Mr. Kowski?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also support the substitute motion that's before us, and as I have understood the debate, it really is a question of trust in the area of flexibility and waiver. And I think the, the second moving clause in the motion basically says we're urging the Regional Water Quality Board to work with us in, after we have set the standards or after they set the standards, to work on the implementation and to look at the, the means and the mechanisms that we will set up. And also, I think, Mr. Wax, some of them might even include mitigation, that if a specific new development project can't achieve that standard itself, it can sort of buy mitigation on an adjoining area which is already developed by implementing and putting grassy areas in parking lots or adding more trees. So I think that those would be some of the tools that I would look to, and I think the real test here in answer to Mr. Ridley Thomas's concern is what those tools will be and how we get about the measure or the method of implementation. tools will be and how we get about the measure or the method of implementation, how flexible we are in waiver where it can't be achieved, or how we look at alternatives that are substituted to achieve the same overall benefit. And so I am not fearful of having the Council weigh in today for the Board tomorrow to say that these standards are what we think are appropriate, we should have them implemented by the Regional Quality, Water Quality Control Board, and then work with them and with the development community and our planning groups to determine how best we achieve this, allowing some degree of flexibility where it's necessary. And I think that I have, I heard you express that that's the issue, that the Board itself believes that there is some flexibility that's necessary, it can't be just absolutely autocratic and total mandate. But I think the goal, the standard accepted and put in place is appropriate, is important for us all to move forward in recognizing the importance of what this needs to, how this needs to be treated in our urban area. So I recommend we support the motion as it's presented.
All right. Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Mr. President, members of the Council, the point that I made, made earlier stands, and it's reinforced by the fact, and I wish to be corrected if such is in order, that the supporting data and information pursuant to the staff report from the Water Board was released on the 18th.
That's correct.
And so, Mr. President, members of the Council, our opportunity to respond formally is based on that rather constricted timeline rather than the lengthy period that would otherwise have been afforded us. That's hardly irrelevant. I think Ms. Galanter's motion is one that many of us are prepared to support, to the extent that it is at variance with the CLA's office, is not a huge problem. What I'm reacting to is the concern that we have not had sufficient time to make a decision that causes each of us to be informed as to whether or not we wish to advance 44A or if, in fact, there's a point of reconciliation between those two points, that being Galanter versus the CLA, if we can speak in that language. Let me just say the following. I think we do have to revisit this issue. I'd like to think that there's enough flexibility in the motion introduced by Ms. Galanter that can, in addition to, Mr. Dickerson, you're saying there's flexibility extended toward the respective municipalities as to the implementation of the policy that's to be promulgated. I think I heard you say that a little earlier, did I not?
Yes, and if I could respond a little bit more to the question.
Well, let me, I just want you on that one point, so I can just push through these points. I think the recommendations of the CLA, there's room, Ms. Galanter, and tell me if there isn't, in the last two points that you move, for these reconciliations, these recommendations, I should say, to be subsumed, is there not?
In the, the first, I further move.
Yes.
The middle paragraph there. I think the only thing we're, where, the only point we differ is that Mr. Deaton feels that we should say something that more explicitly says we oppose the adoption of regulations in advance of addressing our concerns.
Yes.
And, and I mean, you know, there's an argument for that. And that was the suggestion, that, the CLA suggestion for how to address that was to suggest a pilot program, that the regulations somehow include a pilot program after which the effectiveness would be evaluated. Am I stating that?
I take note of the fact that you referred back to committee pursuant to the Board's deliberations and disposition. I think there's unfinished business here, and that's what I hope we can get to.
Well, my concern, let, let me see if I can answer your underlying question more directly.
There you go.
The problem is, if we don't get a, if we don't have a position to articulate to the Board tomorrow.
Right.
We basically lose our opportunity. Because this is, enough other cities have said they're opposed to it, and some other cities have said they support it.
I understand that.
That the chances are this proceedings are going to go on for a while, one way or another, but not in front of the Board. The Board's going to take some kind of action tomorrow.
So then, should I understand that there is potential for amendments or revisions to the Board action, Mr. Dickerson?
There would be the potential for amendments, revisions through the context of the next permit, which would be considered before the Board in July of 2001.
All right.
All right, Mr.?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Deaton, did you want to say something?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Can you talk a little faster than Mark?
Just on the recommendations of, just so you understand what our position is, is that I don't, I have no problem on one if it says support if amended, but I think the amendment is very important. And it has to do with, yes, there will be flexibility. The flexibility in this is that this Council will get to pass the ordinance in order to implement this. The Regional Board is not going to implement this program, we are. We're going to have to come up with what is feasible. We're going to be the first line of defense worth of discussions with the developers. And I don't believe there's enough data. We talk about different regions. Right now, the Maryland area seems to be being frozen, and there's a lot more rainfall there than there is in, in Los Angeles, as is in Puget Sound. Different areas are different. We just think that, we are recommending that we implement this on all city projects. We're suggesting that a tiered approach be used in implementation on larger developments first, and move forward on the rest of this. I don't, I appear to be in, before this body from time to time, and it appears that I'm anti-the-environment in some respects. I happen to be very interested in this. I have personal reasons that people know about relative to storm drain, that I am very desirous of having change. But I don't think that, without the data and doing a tier approach, without not, with not doing that, and us being responsible for implementing the ordinances, that we should support this wholeheartedly.
All right, Mr. Fear.
What I'd like to do is...
Did he talk slower than I did, Mr. President?
He talked a little faster.
I will try.
But I was going to be cut off.
Mr. Dickerson, I want to ask you a question.
Well, he won't.
Yeah. Of all people, I'm not going to make that, succeed at that.
Slow him down.
Yeah. The, the permit is yet to be negotiated. If these regulations pass as currently contemplated, and the permit comes up and the city wishes to negotiate within the context of the permit, issues that the CLA's office is concerned about, leaving aside the outcome of those negotiations, is that possible?
In the context of the next permit, there are certainly plenty of opportunity, including workshops and so forth, to discuss all aspects of how the permit is operating and how it should be modified in the next rendition.
All right, fair enough. I have to say, Ms. Galanter has the right approach, and I urge that we adopt it.
I could just make one additional comment. We are responsible for making this happen in six months.
Okay. Mr. Hernandez?
I call for the question, Mr. President.
We can refer to Charter Committee.
No one else wants to be heard, so the previous question has been imposed. Now, what do we have before us?
Forty-four.
Forty-four A.
Inclusive of the report from the CLA.
Prepare the roll on that. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. We're going to go into executive session.
I was going to ask, there have been a lot of people here on 32, and it shouldn't take long if we could take that out of order now. They've been sitting, they've been waiting all morning. It won't, shouldn't take very long at all.
Members of the Council, we, we were, have this executive session. We have two items that are, got to be in court today, and I'm going to rule that we have to go into executive session. So with all those not involved with the execution, executive session, please leave the Council Chamber.
This is very...
The next item?
Item number 39. There's a quest, motion was approved to authorize City Attorney to expend $192,500 in settlement of case.
All right, prepare the roll on 39. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. Fourth with on that. Next item?
Item number 22.
It's Leonard Shapiro, is he here?
No.
Okay, we'll make his card part of the file. Any discussion on 22? If not, prepare the roll, motion is requ...
He's right there.
Now, he's...
He waited too long, he got lit up.
You're...
They're holding up the gate.
That's...
Not as long as you showed.
Okay, you have the, 22, you want to talk on that?
Mr. President, and members of the Council, item 22 concerns the dedication of streets in the city of LA. Also, dedication of new streets is 23, 24, 25, 26, 28, and 30, all in the same thing. My point is, the same thing I told you two, three weeks ago, that before you should start taking in new streets, that you have to maintain properly, and you have to make sure that the streets are in good, good shape. Before you should do that, you should make, you should make sure that you have a long-range plan, where the city is going to fix its streets up, what they're going to do. There are 6,500 miles of streets, the city is doing 200 a year. I say you're not in a position to accept any more streets unless you make sure that the people who are giving you this street, give you the street in such a condition that you don't have to spend any money on it. Because somebody got to sit down sometime and make the determination, what are you going to do about the city's streets? Right now, we lead the nation in the amount of car damage that occurs on our streets every year, $1,480, something like that, in the, in the United States. We got the worst streets in the United States as far as car damage is concerned. And I think before we take new streets on, we should definitely consider the fact that we do have to have a plan on what we're going to do with our existing street, streets, Mr. President.
Thank you. Okay, we have item number 22 before us. We need a motion on that? Mrs. Walters moves.
I'd like to continue this one week, please.
You want to continue it one week? If there's no objections?
Item 22.
If there's no, the public hearing is closed. If there's no objections, item number 22 is continued one week.
Till February 1st.
Till February 1st. Next item?
Item number 32.
Okay, we have some cards on that.
I believe only, I believe there's only one.
I believe there's only one person who has remained, so I'd like him, if Mr. Ernest Smith could speak.
Okay. Mr. Smith? Pull the microphone up and...
Okay. Thank you, Your Honor. The matter before us, dealing with the removal of the, the motion dealing with the removal of the flag from the state Capitol in South Carolina, I would like to say to this, this body that symbols are significant, and I think that it would be dishonest for us at this time to imply that they are not. To me, this particular symbol takes us back some 235 years. There is no way on this green earth that we can honestly say that even though it is in South Carolina, that we are disassociated from that. I would certainly, it would certainly be in our interest if we support this particular motion that's been introduced by the Councilman, because this would give to South Carolina, let them know that there are another section of the country feel that this symbol is not in the best interest of developing unity and respect for other citizens in our country. Not only would it add to that, but it would add to other cities around the country, that Los Angeles would be giving leadership to other cities around the country who would possibly take similar action. And if they take similar action supporting the boycott that been initiated by the NAACP, I think that it would quickly bring the legislators to the point to where that they would be willing to remove the flag from the Capitol of South Carolina.
Thank you. Mr. Shapiro?
Mr. President, members of the Council, and Joel Wax, I think this motion is well in order. I think the City Council of the city of LA should make its thoughts heard all over the entire United States and allow other people to get involved the same way. Why are you allowing, as he says in here, a tree, the flag symbolizes one of treasonous rebels, whose goal is to destroy their country through violence in order to maintain their ability to enslave others? A lot of people would understand what this means if the, if the Nazi swastika was flying over state Capitol and several other places. They understand what the Nazi rulers of Germany meant at that time and what that flag symbolizes. It's a long time ago since the Civil War, over 100, 100 odd years ago, that we forget what, what it represented. And it represented, as it's said here, slavery and all the worst elements in, in the United States. And if we're going to live under the U.S. Constitution, we're going to live under our Bill of Rights, we're going to believe in freedom of all peoples, we definitely should not tolerate the flying of a, of a flag over an official governmental body. We should make our, our voice heard long and loud, and we should do exactly what he says, encourage, adopt the policy to prohibit city employees from, from traveling to South Carolina, encourage all residents not to visit, and call upon the U.S. Justice Department to investigate. I agree with Mr. Wax 100 percent.
Okay, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Wax?
Very brief, Mr. President. This morning, Ms. Walters and Mr. Ridley Thomas and a number of the leaders of the NAACP gave eloquent testimony to just what slavery has meant in their lives personally and to our country as a whole. And I think that Mr. Shapiro aptly makes the analogy that it is for, for a government agency to sanction this, it's really not unlike a swastika being put on, on a state Capitol, and equally, equally reprehensible, and both must come down. This, this motion not only asks us to go on record supporting the removal of it, but asks us to join in the economic sanctions that the NAACP have brought and are beginning to have an effect. This is not the first time this Council and the city has taken a lead on issues of the, such as these. Certainly, we did so with South Africa and on a number of other occasions. It's timely now because, because the sense of concern is starting to have an impact. Even the governor has indicated a change in position, but the legislature there has to be the one that acts. Some people say that a flag itself is just a symbol. Symbols are acts of racism, no matter what, no matter what the professed intent may be. This is a symbol of slavery of human beings. I don't know what, what greater attack on human dignity there could be. And possibly even more so, I think that this, this encourages other races. For a state government to sanction the flying of a symbol like this encourages others. And there are too many incidents like that. We had one recently in Shadow Hills just two months ago of a burning cross being thrown on the, on the, on the grass of an interracial couple in Shadow Hills. Things like this only encourage that. It's time to come down, and it's time to us do our part. So I ask us not only to join with the NAACP and people across the country in asking the flag come down, but to join in the economic boycott and ask our fellow cities in California, League of Cities, of which you're president now, Mr. President, and the National League of Cities, to join us in this effort. It's another thing that I think we can be proud of doing and something that will definitely have an important effect. And I thank Mr. Smith for sticking it out here for three hours. I guess when you wait 150 years, another three hours is worth it. But thank you very much for, for your participation, and I will explain to the other people exactly what had happened in executive session and why we're not able to take it up till now.
Ms. Walters?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I want to express my appreciation to Mr. Wax for bringing this motion, to Mr. Ridley Thomas for his support of this motion, and say to you, Councilmembers, that it is just absolutely vital that we all support this motion unanimously. There are many reasons why the Confederate flag should not be flying in South Carolina today. should not be flying in South Carolina today. To me, the Confederate flag wherever it flies is a symbol of a renegade part of our history, people who engaged in oppression, in murder, in brutality, of another people simply because they were black. And that was the only reason. They saw that black slaves that they bought and sold like chattel were their economic ticket, and they were going to secede from the Union, did secede from the Union. South Carolina, the very first shot in the Civil War was fired at Fort Sumter, just off the coast of South Carolina. I shared with the press conference this morning that I had the opportunity to visit South Carolina two and a half years ago, my first trip. I had resisted going there, but I went two and a half years ago, and I tell you, I had many experiences that left me with cold chills as I experienced them. One of the things that we visited was an old plantation where the slave quarters still existed. And there was a great big tree that said, they said it had been authenticated to be 600 years old. And in that tree, high up on, it was a huge tree, high up on one of its branches, an oak tree, was this cast iron bell. And hanging from that bell was a rope. And they told us that that rope was used by the slave owners to call all the slaves from the field when they needed to do a couple of things. One, to hang a slave because they were runaways. Two, to beat a slave. They would tie them to this huge base of this tree and beat them with the lash, and sometimes just beat them almost to death. Those are some of the things that the Confederate flag means to me. I almost had a stroke of apoplexy Sunday morning when I heard one of our very popular news anchors, news pundits on one of the Sunday shows say, well, she had several relatives that fought under that flag and stood up for what they believed in. And so she really understood why people didn't want that Confederate flag to come down. And had I had the opportunity, I would have told her what the Confederate flag means to me. The Confederate flag means oppression. It means murder. It means rebelling against your government based on the need to suppress one population. And that population is Africans, African Americans. I cannot tell you how important this is. A reporter this morning raised a question about South Africa. You know, when the, the boycott, when people started suggesting a boycott of South Africa, everybody said, no, it won't do any good. It won't do any good. But as more and more people and more and more states, businesses began boycotting South Africa, it did some good. And we saw the good that it did. And I had the opportunity to visit South Africa just a couple of months ago. And I could see the transformation in that country. And I tell you, I think it's time we have a transformation in this country, that we bury those Confederate flags, that we bury the Confederate thought and look back upon it as a terrible point in our history and march forward together in this new millennium so that all people here are guaranteed a right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness.
Okay, we have item 32 before us. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith on that. Next item?
Item number 36, called special by Councilmember Goldberg.
I think she, didn't, did she bring an amendment to that?
36A, that's on everybody's desk.
Substitute motion. All right. Prepare the roll on a substitute motion. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 38, called special by Councilmember Hernandez.
Mr. Hernandez, call 38 special.
Mr. President, members of the council, it's been a long day before us. But item 38 is asking for us to take a position on Proposition 26. And we had the school board members here, at least one school board member and the assistant superintendent here last Friday. And he disclosed to us the need for additional school facilities. What I want to point out to everybody are two important provisions. One is, I think the school district currently is setting the wrong standard for the development of schools in the inner city when they talk about abandoning the current Belmont site as opposed to figuring out what's it take to clean up the site, make it safe, and build a school where the children live in a community. And at the same time, I also know that the areas of the city where they're finding it easier to submit applications for funding tend to be the areas of the city where we don't have the same needs for schools. And where they have extreme needs, that hasn't been happening. One of the things that is very clear to me is that we are in a crisis situation in Los Angeles when it comes to educational institutions for our children. And I think Prop 26 can help relieve that crisis. But there's a provision of Proposition 26 that I think is very important because it requires that the local school bonds list the specific projects that would be completed with the bond money to be used. And I think that'll give the voters a chance to really look at how, what impacts it'll have in their neighborhoods before this provision is utilized. So I just urge unanimous vote of Prop 26. You need to know that I'm making this motion and bringing it before you in an atmosphere where I don't believe the school district is basically making decisions in the best interest of those communities of needs at this time. But at the same time, I understand the need for schools.
Mr. Wax?
I'm certainly for smaller classes. I'm certainly for safer schools. And I'm certainly for financial accountability. But I'm not for changing the requirement from a two-thirds vote to a majority vote to increase taxes. And so I have to disagree with you, Mr. Hernandez. And it's consistent, I think, with my views on these issues.
Item 38 before us. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eight ayes, two noes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 41.
Was, did we call that because it was an ordinance?
No, we lost.
Oh. Let's, yeah, what is the attendance tomorrow? Oh, and Mr. Holden wanted to continue that one day anyway, so we'll continue it one day. All right, the next item?
Item number 42.
All right, Leonard Shapiro.
Mr. President and council members, item 42 concerns something of vital interest to this city council, $44 million, of which they claim they only need 42 million, but they want a $2 million cushion. But beat out isn't made. The point is, what do you need this for? This is used for the Department of Public Social Services to build a new building on, on Sepulveda and Pico because the present one is seismically unsafe. That's okay. Who's doing this building? County is doing this building. Why is the county coming to the city? Well, they say the city is going to use part of the services for the citizens in here who use the, the DPSS, and therefore the city should cooperate. They should. But this is a new gimmick. This is a lease for 30 years that the city is providing financing for something that the county got to do. Now, it says that the, the city doesn't get too much liability, and you don't. They basically protect you. But it does say right in here that you got to, you got to read, there is some risk. If the proposed project does not meet federal and state requirements, they can abandon the lease. This will result in default in which the city may have some improvement, although not financially, but you, some involvement. Yes, yeah, you're going to be involved a little bit. But why are you doing this type of thing? I know that DPSS work to help the unfortunate is very important, but I don't like the way this thing is done. They claim, this is not the first time it's been done, this type of gimmick was used in Glendale and El Monte. It doesn't give the years it was involved. And then they say, early this year, you did some similar financing on the exposition West Asset Leasing Corporation. Yes, you did that. So therefore, they want to use it again. Maybe they'll be coming to you for more and more of these things, that you provide the leasing. And it says in here that the controller doesn't know if this has to go on your record as debt. The controller still isn't sure. But in all probability, it will be listed as debt, although there will be a, a, a statement following that saying that the county is basically responsible. They are. They are. There's no question about that. Ladies and gentlemen of the city council, if you're doing something good and there's no possible other way they can do this except to get involved in a leasing program with you on this tax-exempt financing, okay, then you could be stuck with it. I don't think this is the way to go. And I, although you did it once before, I don't think you should do it again. I think financing should be done by the, by the outfit that's involved. That's the county.
Thank you, Mr. Shapiro. Ms. Galanter?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an item in my district. And just to, for, some of you may be familiar with this. For many, many years now, I, since long before it was in my district when Mr. Yaroslavsky wrestled with it, we have been trying to find a way, working with the county, for the county to move the DPSS office from its current location on Pico Boulevard to somewhere else. And they have now found a location, also on Pico Boulevard, just a little bit farther west. The building that they are leaving will be something that the city will have a very intense interest in helping to, to determine the future of it. Mr. Yaroslavsky, having moved from the council to the Board of Supervisors, has now actually been able to help solve the problem by being on the other side of the fence. And I urge that we go forward with this. What I do want to do to make sure that our record is clear on this because we, we did have some issues as we were developing the proposal, is to move the CIO's recommendation and include with that recommendation the CIO's report. And while I'm at it, I'd like to thank Mr. Hernandez and his staff and the, Mike Hernandez, that is not the last Hernandez we heard from, and also the CIO's office for their patience and perseverance in getting this resolved. And I move the CIO's report and recommendation.
Hernandez?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council. And again, I also need to recognize the office of the CLA's office and the city attorney's office. What we had here was a process that was kind of compressed in a short period of time. And so it took extra efforts for people to review all the agreements and to come up with the language. It's a slightly different funding mechanism than we've used before as part of pass-throughs. And so the city wanted to make sure that it had its guarantees in terms of being able to basically have no liability in regards to the project itself. And what you need to know, at the end of a 30-year period, we will be owning the building as a city. And we wanted to make sure that certain financial obligations were also fulfilled. And so at this time, what we know is the escrow has to close tomorrow. And that's why it came before you on Friday. But at the same time, we were given more time. And I just urge unanimous vote at this time.
CM. We have item 42. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith on that. Next item?
Not on the regular agenda is Special 1. Findings need to be made by the city attorney.
Prepare the roll on the findings.
Would you like me to?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. The clerk certified the petition for the referendum on the Greek Theater yesterday. The ballot arguments for the election on this item are due Saturday. Therefore, the council needs to make, to take this item up to provide certainty in this matter. The council would need to make the findings that the need to act arose after the posting of the agenda and that there is an immediate need to act.
Okay, prepare the roll on the findings. Okay, Mrs., Mr. Wax, do you want to speak on a finding? Mrs. Walters?
I, I know that this, the announcement, the clerk just found that it had qualified. But I don't see what the urgency is for today taking this up with no prior notice.
It's my understanding that the city clerk has said that Saturday is the day for ballot arguments on this. Also, you have an outstanding contract. And my understanding is that you need to, to provide certainty as to what's happening with that contract.
Point of order, Mr. President. I'm going to, I'm going to leave that this is going to be discussed because I disqualified myself on the original vote. I just want to make this announcement. The Planning, Land Use Management Committee will meet in five minutes after the conclusion of the council.
Mrs. Walters, are you finished?
Yes.
Okay. Prepare the roll on the findings. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. I'm, I'm going to ask that this be continued one day so we can get the city attorney, I mean, the city clerk to verify the, the signatures, not to verify, but to confirm the signatures. We'll continue it one day. Mr. Wax, you have the floor first.
I'd like to put a motion on the floor. I move that we rescind the contract and ask the Recreation and Parks Commission to immediately go out to competitive bid.
Our Mr., Mrs. Walters?
I certainly want to second that motion by Mr. Wax. I think that just by your continuing it one day flies in the face of the findings. And I think it's imperative for us to act now to see that this dirty contract is washed clean from our slate of negotiations, of our deliberations, and that we never, ever go this way again. We need to vote it down today and vote it right away.
Ms. Sikowski, you second that motion? It's only a five-year extension, not a 39-year extension.
I didn't say anything.
Okay, we have, we have a motion to continue. Prepare the roll. One day. Tabulate the vote.
Oh, no, no. My, you had a motion to-
To continue one day.
You also had a motion to vote on it today.
Yeah, I know, but-
That was moved and seconded.
I know, but there's a motion to continue. It comes first. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
No.
Seven ayes, three noes.
Okay, that failed. Now we have a motion to, Mrs. Walters, to rescind today? Was that your motion? Or Mr. Wax's motion?
Ask the Recreation and Parks Commission to-
I'd ask for a vote.
Go out to competitive bid.
I'd ask for a no vote.
I vote.
Prepare the roll.
I vote.
Tabulate the vote.
Five ayes, five noes.
And that failed. So it's still on the desk, so we'll have it tomorrow. Next item?
Request to be excused from council attendance.
Well, we have public comment yet.
Now it's time for public comment and not a general item.
Leonard Shapiro?
Mr. President, members of the council, I'd like to speak once more on this open-door policy that I discussed in the past. Too many people at the city council thinks that this open-door policy doesn't apply to them. Well, the open-door policy does. It applies to every elected official. If you want to make sure that the public is not turned off, that you don't have a frustrated, alienated public, you got to make yourself available. That's why you were elected for. You can make yourself available as members of the city council You can make yourself available as members of the city council one day in a month, one day in a month. It can be for four hours or five hours or eight hours, but it could, one day in a month, you let it be known that the councilperson will be available in their office to speak to any member of the public who wishes to take, see them for approximately five minutes. This can be done. It was done previously by two mayors in the city, Yordi and Bradley, and it was done successful, very successful. The people who were involved with this understood what was happening, and they felt a lot, lot less closer to their governing officials. Now, nobody on the city council has exercised any initiative in saying, my door will be open on the first day of the month, on the fifth day of the month, on the 15th day of the month, to any member of the public who wishes to see me. I think that should be seriously considered, and that, and each member should do it on individual basis, or quite possibly, somebody might want to make a motion mandating that the city council do this, and while you're doing that, mandate that other elected officials do the same thing. Jimmy Hahn, who's now running for mayor, said a city attorney that he would be available, he would be amenable to having these open-door policies. And I think also, while we're on the same subject, that there's no reason why we can't have more district meetings. There's been no district meeting scheduled for the year 2000, and to open this new millennium, we got to get back closer to the public as much as we can, and I think somebody should exercise the initiative as quickly as possible to say we're going to hold a district meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Shapiro. You mean, we can only have to meet with people once a month? Is that what you're suggesting? I meet with them almost every day.
Well, I can't get in to see you if I call your office. No member of the public...
You've never called me, Mr. Shapiro. Don't say that publicly.
I said I can't if I do it.
Yeah, you, all right, you're, you're out of order now. Alan Payton.
The point is, it should be open.
One day a week, one day a month, that's great.
One day a month, right.
Pull the microphone up to you and give your name, please.
Yes, sir, my name is Alan Pryor. I am a resident of Wilmington. I'm here on a non-agenda. A few months ago, the Don's Hotel, at the tune of $2.7 million, were turning to senior citizens' billing. The people that used to live there were promised relocation assistance. I was getting a small portion of this relocation assistance, and now I've been denied, and I'm about to be evicted. I believe that the people that took over the Don Hotel has fraudently submitted or taken money that was promised to people to be relocated from the Don's Hotel, myself included, and I need to speak with Mr. Rudy Savodovitch Jr.
I would suggest you go to his office, and he's not in today, so, but go to his office, and I might be able to help you. Okay, okay, the public, that's all the cards we have, so the public comment period is closed. Next item.
Request to be excused from council attendance. Councilmember Walters requests to be excused on January 26th to arrive at 11:15 and to be excused on February 18th for city business. This meets policy.
A unanimous vote.
Motion for postponing a referral.
A unanimous vote.
The desk is clear.
Is there anything before us? Adjourned motions? Would everyone please stand? Ms. Sikowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to counsel to adjourn in memory of Herbert L. Egner, 92, who was the founding principal of Palisades High School. He had been a teacher and administrator with the Los Angeles Unified School District for 41 years. He had been born and raised in LA and earned three degrees from UCLA, starting at its original campus on Vermont Avenue and then ultimately in Westwood. He started teaching chemistry in 1929 at Beverly Hills High School, which was then part of the Los Angeles Unified School District. From there, he earned administration credentials and ultimately was asked in 1961 to organize the new $6 million Palisades High School as its founding principal. I wish we could build schools today for $6 million. He headed the school until his retirement in 1970 and also served as president of both Los Angeles City High School Principals Association as well as Junior High School Principals Association, and I will give the clerk the pertinent information.
Mr. Pacheco.
I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of John Reed. Mr. Reed was a longtime resident of Northridge. He was very active at the Northern United Methodist Church. He was a banker. He was heavily invested in the San Fernando Valley community and was a very active member. He was an adamant University of Oklahoma football fan. He is survived by his two daughters, Beverly Reed O'Connell and Linda Reed.
Mr. Wax. Council is adjourned.